Oh Canada, our home and native land. True ancient love, we love our sons so much. With all we must, we see the rise of the true Lord Strong and Free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on your holy hill. God deep of heaven, glorious and green. Oh Canada, we stand on your holy. Oh Canada, we stand on your holy.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes of the City Council Meeting in the House, September 22nd, 2014, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Did everyone have a chance to read those minutes? There's no errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Thiessen.
I move that council accept the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our council meeting, I think everybody's favorite time. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. We have this opportunity at every regular council meeting, and so we want to ensure that it's aware that that time exists. Is there anybody that wanted to come forward on a matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing? See a group that may be here for a public hearing, but I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close our delegation portion of the agenda, and we'll do that. We'll move on into public hearings, and we'll start with item 6.1, the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, the auto, the Trader Ridge Outline Plan and associated land use bylaw amendments. Mr. Welton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. ISL Engineering and Land, on behalf of the landowner, has submitted applications to amend the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, adopt the Trader Ridge Outline Plan, and amend the land use bylaw. Trader Ridge is located at the north end of the city, north of 132nd Avenue and directly west of 100th Street. Site consists of three parcels, two lots, and then the remainder of the southwest quarter section. Lots 1A and 2 are already zoned CA arterial commercial, so the land use bylaw amendment only applies to the remnant of the quarter section. The area is currently mostly under agricultural use. The smaller of the two lots in the southeast corner of the area contains a farm equipment dealership, and the larger lot is vacant. The land's really relatively flat, slopes from the northeast to the southwest towards the future storm pond. The industrial area, A industrial area, is located in the county to the north. The area to the east across 100th Street is also industrial. North Ridge across 132nd Avenue to the south is a mix of commercial and residential, and to the west is Arbor Hills 2, which is a developing residential area. The existing development concept in the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan shows Arbor Hills as a primarily commercial area, which is identified in gray on the map. The proposed amendment would make it exclusively commercial area. A storm channel and pond are required to accommodate storm drainage in the area. Existing and proposed maps, which you have before you, show the proposed changes to the area structure plan. The amendment also proposes changing to the future network in accordance with the, I guess it's the 132nd Avenue Transportation Functional Study. The land use concept for Trader Ridge shows the area as intended to develop as a commercial area in accordance with the area structure plan. The south-central and east areas identified in pink are intended to develop as highway commercial, to take advantage of the exposure to traffic on 100th Street and 132nd Avenue, both of which are arterial roads. The west area in red is intended to develop as a general commercial area. General commercial is intended to develop with less intensity and with lower building height than highway commercial. A drainage channel and storm pond will be located in the southwest corner of the plan area. As is the case with all storm ponds, the location of the pond is largely determined by the topography of the site and is at or near the lowest part of the site. The drainage channel is required to redirect storm water from 140th Avenue to the pond and eventually onto Bear Creek. The channel also provides a buffer between the commercial and commercial development in this area and the single-family detached development that is occurring in the Arbor Hills 2 area. The brown line on map 5, which I don't have in front of me, shows the drainage channel will also provide a pedestrian link from the end of the trails in Arbor Hills 2, south to 132nd Avenue and west to 102nd Street. All the internal roads in the area would be commercial collector roads. The typical cross-section for commercial collectors would have sidewalks on both sides. The pedestrian links show where the sidewalks are likely to be wider. Because Trader Ridge is an exclusively commercial area, the provision of municipal reserve was not considered necessary. Money in lieu of municipal reserve in the amount of 5.02 hectares or 12.4 acres would be paid to the city instead. The value would be determined in accordance with Section 667-1A of the Municipal Government Act at the time of subdivision. And the amount that I identified in the report, there is a municipal reserve caveat registered on the title indicating that that is the amount of municipal reserve that the city is entitled to. The Outline Plan accommodates the possible development of a city entrance feature in the northwest corner of the area adjacent to 100th Street, which is denoted by the asterisks on the plan. If the city requires any land for the entrance feature, that amount would be treated as municipal reserve dedication. Trader Ridge is bounded on the east by 100th Street and on the south by 132nd Avenue, both of which are arterial roads and are designed to accommodate a large volume of traffic. Within Trader Ridge, all roads will be designed and built as collector roads and designed to accommodate commercial traffic. Because all the internal roads will be collectors, they will all be accommodated to transit, which provides flexibility in transit planning routes through the area. Proposed 139th Avenue connection to 100th Street is in accordance with the 132nd Transportation Functional Study. However, this connection to 100th Street will require the closure of 140th Avenue directly to the north. That portion of 140th Avenue is within the city boundary, which is the so-called Sharkfin. Engineering Services does not have a complete traffic assessment for the land. The north connection to 140th Avenue and internal intersection signalization will require additional transportation analysis prior to subdivision approval. As I mentioned previously, the two existing lots in the southeast corner of the plan area have already been zoned CA arterial commercial, and the remainder of the area, therefore, is being zoned from urban reserve to CA and CG in accordance with the map in front of you. Proposed amendment, again, uses the arterial commercial to take advantage of the exposure to the site, and most of the area is being rezoned to CA. The amendment proposes rezoning the land along the west boundary adjacent to Arbor Hills because it provides lower maximum building heights and because it allows less intense uses. This makes CG more compatible with the adjacent future residential area in Arbor Hills. The city is required to hold public hearing before considering bylaws to adopt the amend the land use bylaw or area structure plots, structure plans, and to advertise the public hearing in accordance with the requirements of the Act. Advertising and other notification has occurred in accordance with the requirements of the Act. In addition, the public consultation for the preparation of the Trader Ridge Outline Plan as a statutory plan was also undertaken in accordance with the Act. The amendments are hierarchical in nature and should be considered in the order presented. The proposed bylaw will allow the subdivision and development of Trader Ridge as a commercial area in accordance with CA arterial commercial and CG general commercial districts in the land use bylaw, and planning and development supports the adoption of the bylaws. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Any questions at this time for administration? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Dan question the stormwater management area in Trader Ridge area. Is it just going to be an empty little grassy field, or are we going to have like stuff around there for actually people to have lunch from working businesses? And maybe where the houses are going to be living just to the west of there, actually play soccer down in there, or is that been looked at, or are we just going to have grass where weeds growing in it?
Through the mayor, I think that that is better directed to the applicant. The applicant does those negotiations with the City Engineering Services Department regarding the amenities that occur around a pond, and I think the applicant is probably in a better position to identify what sorts of amenities they're proposing in and around the storm pond. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Welton. Any other questions at this time for administration? Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I just have a question in regards to what it says in the report here. It says Engineering Services does not have a complete traffic assessment for these lands. The north connection to 140th Avenue and internal intersection signalization will require additional transportation analysis prior to subdivision approval. My question is not necessarily about 140th Avenue, but more along the lines of 102nd Street. There's residential and commercial that are going in there, and I just, maybe you can enlighten me as to how the city can properly address the subdivision of the lands properly without having a proper transportation analysis done first.
Could you, I guess, explain a little bit more with respect to the residential that you're talking about?
Well, there's a couple things, actually. Thanks for asking, Dan. It says that we're going to have room for transit road with, along 132nd Avenue on one of the maps, it says we're going to widen the road, so transit can be built to connect to those areas. But I'm just thinking the traffic volume counts, and it's pretty closely connected to the county, so people traveling in and through might take that 132nd Avenue, 102nd Street just to get to the main arterial without having to turn onto 100th Street. I just, I guess I'm really asking about traffic volume, like is what's it currently, and do we expect it to increase, and are we going to address that when we build the road?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if Norman's able to answer the questions with respect to the 132nd Avenue Transportation Study, which I believe sort of went into the traffic volumes and that sort of thing at that intersection of 102nd and 132nd.
Mr. Carl, can you speak to?
The current traffic study we've received from the developer did not analyze the impacts of the connection that would occur between 139th Avenue and 140th Avenue, although it's in the current area structure plan. Engineering has concerns with that because that connects up to a county area where there's potentially five to six-quarter sections of additional development that would be connected to that area. The city typically connects our neighborhoods to the arterial roadways and not internally. And so without that assessment being done, we don't know what the impact to that road is. And having just recently completed the 102nd Street Traffic Study, the draft, which was posted about a month ago, we want to make sure before that road is included and constructed that it's properly analyzed.
Thanks, Mr. Carl. Councillor Radrick?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Dan, usually we get some description in the report relative to any feedback received. I didn't note any comment there relative to the feedback received from the advertising, letter sending, et cetera.
Through the mayor, we did not receive any comments or concerns as a result of any of the advertising. The only real comment, I guess, that the city did receive was from the county. Basically, they indicated their support for a connection from between this area and the area to the north, and indicated essentially that, yeah, that they, I guess, they required a connection, and that they would initiate the appeal process available under Section 690 of the Act if it was not provided.
Thank you. Any further questions for administration at this point? We'll have another opportunity towards the end. So we'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, and first we'll ask anyone who'd like to speak in support of the application to come forward. Anybody who'd like to come forward to speak in support of the application, come on to the front and introduce yourself. Wel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. Been hired as part of the Trader Ridge product on behalf of Trader Properties. Have them with me as well. I'm Sam Osman with Trader Properties. Jeff McCammon with Cushman Wakefield, and Doug Bauer with Cushman Wakefield. So I think what I'll do to maybe make this simple is I'll just kind of run through our assessment here, and then I'll hit all the questions that Dan wasn't able to answer. So the Trader Ridge development, I mean, Dan's done a very good job of explaining the location, the existing uses as far as agriculture. Everyone's aware of the farm equipment dealership that's at the north end of 102nd Street. There is also a high-pressure gas line that runs along the east side of 102nd throughout the extent of the plan, so I actually might get your eye in the sky on so that I can point some things out. So the, this land, as Dan stated, has slopes pretty significantly from this northeast to the southwest corner of the site. The area in green is where we have proposed for our stormwater management facility. That is, there's also a drainage channel in the northeast corner. I don't know if up to your existing plan, you've probably seen that. There's a small channel that runs through the northeast corner of the quarter section that drains into the Arbor Hills ravine, which is connected to the ponds at 108th Street and 132nd. So the intention with this plan is to obviously accommodate a commercial-industrial development, predominantly commercial, so it's 51 hectares or so of commercial land, zoned with C commercial arterial and also general commercial. The stormwater management in the southwest corner of the quarter will handle any retention matters that we have. There's all, and as Dan stated, there is a deferred reserve caveat of 5.02 hectares, which through some discussions with administration, we've determined that that would be best dealt with through cash and lieu. We have a pretty significant trail network and whatnot for the residential neighborhood to the west, so it's, and we've tried to maintain that to allow some pedestrian connectivity. This is, in all likelihood, we'll have some, a large amount of retail kind of in the southeast corner, so at the intersection of 100th and 132nd Ave. And there's probably going to be a fairly strong contingent of retail along 132nd as well. So our expectation is that the neighborhoods that are adjacent to this development will use this commercial quite often, so. The transportation network, and I will get into this a little bit more detailed as we kind of go on here, but transportation network essentially has, as stated earlier, we've got 100th Street on the east, bounding the east side of the property, and 132nd Ave on the south, so a fairly major, I think, would have still considered a highway and an arterial in the south. So the collector network that's proposed is fairly simple, fairly good, like going to provide good land uses, and at this point, the intention is not to chop it up very much, so, you know, very large lots and whatnot. So the, there will, the brown lines, I know you can see that plan when we were doing a presentation, but so that is the proposed trail network. So the connectivity from the Arbor Hills neighborhood, also from the North Ridge neighborhood for the residences there, would give them pedestrian access to all of the businesses located throughout the plan area. All of the roads within the Trader Ridge development would be collectors. There's, they're fairly, there's not many of them, so the intention is that they're going to carry quite a bit of traffic. The TIA that has been done to date, it has been completed and it conforms to the recently completed 132nd Ave Functional Study. The reason that that's been brought up today is basically because of this connection to 140th Ave. So when we originally started this plan, that was not anticipated, so the effect of that connection is somewhat unknown right now. So I'm going to propose an amendment to the text a little bit later on that would kind of cover that off so that we're able to do a TIA and address that as we move forward. The intersections are, as stated earlier, 139th Ave and 100th Street has an all-directional access. Full expectation that has traffic signals. There's a right-in, right-out proposed at the midpoint between 139th and 132nd, so that would be here. That would be in off of 100th Street. We have another right, I believe there was a right-in, right-out, there might be an arrow dropped here, but the for sure right-out of the retail space that potentially would be in the current vacant lot would be directly across from North Gate Honda, and we've an all-directional access at 102nd Street. There was amendment that came forward not that long ago, but at the start of our process for this outline plan, which showed that as we revised that to an all-directional rather than a right-in, right-out. And a right-in, right-out also at 103rd Street and 132nd Avenue. So fairly good access to the plan area. There's also a collector connection to the Arbor Hills neighborhood, which runs to a collector that has direct access to 108th Street. So the only direction that currently we are a little bit unknown on is the connection to 140th. The water servicing, I'll rip through water and sanitary, it's fairly straightforward. We've got a water connection, water line that runs on the south side of 140th Ave and the north end of the property, so along here. The, it has more than ample fire flows to handle commercial, industrial, whatever type of development we want. So that's been assessed, and fire flows are more than adequate for the development. So we've got a second connection, well, actually three connections. A second connection at 102nd Street on a water line that was extended up there with the North Ridge development, and a third connection along 133rd, I believe it is, into the Arbor Hills neighborhood. And another one at 139th going into Arbor. So that would be a future connection, though that development's not to that point yet. The sanitary servicing, current plans, originally plans had a connection on 102nd Street through discussions with Aquaterra. It's been noted to us that they don't feel that that line has enough capacity to handle this development, so we have rerouted basically the entire development to a 375-millimeter diameter trunk sewer that is extended to, within a few hundred meters of 132nd Ave and the North Ridge development. So a little bit of ongoing talks with Aquaterra there to try to accommodate some flows at least through 102nd, but at this stage, the intention is to push all of it through the North Ridge development and a trunk main that exists there. So both the sanitary and water design reports are completed and approved by Aquaterra, so we have no concerns with that. Stormwater management plan, being that this is a commercial-type development, the runoff coming from it is a little more significant than your traditional residential neighborhood. So the natural drainage course that was in the northwest corner of the quarter section was looked at, I guess, from the perspective of whether we could keep it. We talked to Alberta Environment about that drainage course and what we would ultimately do with it. So the long-term direction on that was to take it west along 140th Ave and drain it south to our pond, so to capture most of the water there. Alberta Environment does have some concerns with potentially diverting all of the water from that into a retention facility, just with the ravine that runs through Arbor Hills. They wanted us to retain some flows through that to maintain all the vegetation and whatnot. So we'll likely leave a lot of that flow to go that direction. The remainder of our assessment focused on getting everything to the pond. So being, excuse me, the arrows show the overline flow pass, so everything will dump into a pond in the southwest corner. We've been asked several times why the pond's there and not here. Rational is just that this is high-profile, high-visibility land, and we were able to push it back a little bit and put it next to the residences rather than next to another commercial site. So this, now we've got neighborhoods in Arbor Hills, which back onto the pond, it'll be a little bit more of an amenity for them as well. So those flows would come into the pond and be released at pre-development rates to a storm sewer that was installed this year with the Arbor Hills development. So everything functionally there. The stormwater management plan, design report was, has also been approved with the City Grand Prairie and Engineering Services, so essentially we are good to go there as well. Shallow utilities, same as every development, they will be extended to the property by individual franchise holders, so the Atco Gas, Atco Electric, Telus East Link will be requested at this time of servicing. Phasing of the developments, our initial plan, and, you know, is to do this in a single phase. That obviously is, as every development is somewhat economically driven, so depending on conditions of the economy, we would expect one, two, phases three potentially, but the expectation is that this is, there's a fairly high demand on it, so there's a lot of interest in the property already, and obviously it's in a spectacular location, so we anticipate that it's probably not going to take that long to build out. So the expectations are good, the developers are willing to do that as quickly as possible. So I'll hit the questions here first, but what I just wanted to explain before we move on is the, on the transportation. So we're going to propose an amendment only to the text, but essentially through the discussions that we had with the county, this 140th Ave connection, there's kind of a lot going on in this corner, so the, to get the 139th Ave connection, Alberta Transportation wants 140th closed. So now, when we close 140th, the county wants an alternate route for their traffic. So to put our first access in, we need to close this access. The county wants a connection to 140th to make their 140th Ave rerouted a little bit more efficiently than what they have today. So the, trying to accommodate everyone here was really difficult. So the, well, we've, we looked at a lot of different locations and essentially, and we've had several discussions with the county, they're quite happy with any connection between 103rd Street and 101st Street. So what we're going to propose, and I'm going to read the amendment right now just so that everyone has an idea of what it is, and then I'll probably answer some questions and I'll hit the rest of the questions as well, and then if that works, I can come back to the amendment at the end again. So the amendment that we were going to propose is rather than lock that location down on 140th, is there's in paragraph 3.1, the fifth paragraph of transportation network, we were going to rewrite the paragraph to say such. "As a result of the closure of 140th Avenue, a road connection between 139th and 140th Avenue was also proposed. The alignment of this connection may be located between 103rd Street and 101st Street. The location shall be determined through a TIA at the time of subdivision application without further amendment to this document." So the intention there is to, is to allow basically us to complete a TIA with that, with that alignment moved to wherever the TIA tells us to put it. So if, you know, if we're better off to have that location on 103rd Street, we would put it there. To, to be honest, to the developer, this really makes little difference. Preferential for us is to remove it from this location. This is, this is a pretty prime lot and with highway frontage, and the idea to not carve it in half is significantly better for us, so. But obviously, we're cognizant of the traffic issues and the concerns on 102nd Street. So intention is to complete a TIA. Intention is to complete a TIA and wherever that road lands within here, um that's where we place it, so. The uh because that's not complete, um you know, we should, the city's still, administration's still working on the one hundred and second street TIA, so. Are uh functional, so once that's uh completed, it's a pretty easy tweak to to figure out what's gonna happen when we connect the the county lines. So Come back to that in a minute and with any questions on that.
As far Mr. Rossler, do you have that uh have you handed that the text of that amendment to administration, do they have a copy of it?
No, I can get that for you.
Okay, for you.
So the you on the TIA, like I said, it it does conform to everything that's in place today. We're really just talking about that connection to one hundred and forty, so. The as far as the stormwater ponds go, uh I believe it was Council McLean asked about that, the we did actually look at putting soccer pitches in the bottom of this pond, is it it is a dry pond. Um it does drain to future Arbor Hills pond, so the we were able to do a dry pond there for and and get our water quality that we wanted out of it, the Through the city's design manuals and standards, there are any landscaping around a storm pond, we've got specific requirements that we gotta do there, so. Around the storm pond, there's gonna be trees and and rates identified in the in the uh construction and and design manuals. Uh there'll also be some benches and dog dispensers and things like that along the trails and whatnot, so. So that side of it, the leisure side of it, uh we did look at soccer pitches, but it was uh we actually have drawings showing a couple down there, but the The direction that we got at the end was it wasn't really gonna work for the Parks Department, so vetted that with them and they were they were happier to put Money into something else and and do that rather than, so this is it's it's actually designated as a PUL, so it's it's not Minus four reserve, so they didn't feel that that was the place to put it, so. But we did have that discussion and we were, you know, willing to to kinda review it, so. I guess if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
More questions for presenter, I see a couple in the queue, Councilor Rice?
The amendment uh to the road, where would that go, would it go in the area structure plan or The outline plan, where would it go?
Uh thank you, Councilor Rice, the uh the amendment would be in the outline plan, so the section three point one, paragraph five of the outline plan. Uh I did review the area structure plan to see if there was anything in there that would uh require amendment and and basically it's It just identifies a connection and says that the outline plan
The area structure plan is fine, it would be the outline plan that needs to be amended, thank you.
Councilor McLean?
Scott, I heard about this before as well with uh in inside that area for water in case there's a big runoff or whatever. You're saying it could be under review, cause it's like, we're gonna be right beside homes, uh houses there, and it's just gonna become nothing, blah. And this area, if you look directly across to the east, Petro Canada and Humpty's are number one for the retail, so. This area's gonna be really, really good, and they know it, business knows it. I would like to see a an out detailed outline plan of a recreation area for workers in that area, for the businesses And for people in residential to live, there's gonna be a trail, but they can look awfully blah, you don't do too much to, you're telling me a couple picnic tables. Where's a plan, something that would show us more than what I'm hearing, cause we've seen a lot of developments happen and nothing doesn't look good at all.
So the
Do you have anything on paper?
Not with me, the uh the Arbor Hills development, which is directly adjacent to this, um might have a little bit of an area on it. This is the the Arbor Hills area structure plan, so it's not the the outline plan that I was going to show you, but the This ravine that was that is constructed is kinda the central feature for the whole neighborhood, so. Our intention is to draw everybody into that space, there's all of the park space within Arbor Hills, so we, I think, I believe this year we dedicated About eighty percent of the of the municipal reserve that was for that entire development, so. You know, up in the range of of ten acres of land that that was dedicated and is being constructed as we speak. I don't know, it's been down there for a while, cause roads, but the this has been retained as a natural feature, so that's actually, there's actually about uh fi- Four or five hectares of environmental reserve there, uh and a two kilometer long trail system with three parks adjacent to it. So as far as recreational uses, that's the that's where we're trying to focus everyone. The pond that we're putting uh directly beside this is connected to that, so the uh that feature, well, obviously we'll have a trail system around it. And the intention is to is to draw on that, the the pond that we are constructing has um it's it's not a a dry barren pond, so it it has some channels in it, it'll have bulrushes and Some vegetation growth and things like that, um it'll be a little more walkable than than a wet pond, obviously. But the, you know, we've vetted that with the Parks Department to make sure that everything was working, but the Intention is to to utilize kinda that that or regional perspective that the Parks Department is trying to achieve, so. That helps.
See uh Councilor Ethan?
Thank you, Mayor Bill, hi Scott, um I kinda wanna go back to the Environment Canada thing, I still wanna talk about that storm pond. Um you said that Environment Canada had some issues and looking over the drainage that it can, I think it's been made mention, you mentioned it yourself, everything's going to one spot. Uh could you elaborate on Environment Canada's position on everything going to one spot and the potential maybe runoff into the residentials?
Yeah, so under Alberta Environment's standards and regulations, we're required to store any uh any water and and Capacities within some type of a retention facility uh that And in one location uh on land and outlet at our predevelopment flow rate, so. Uh the predevelopment flow rate in Grand Prairie for this area is five liters per second, so essentially what they say that's the amount of water that would come off of that field. And we try to put the ponds and the discharge at the exact same location that it was going naturally before. So that was why uh when we talk about that that natural drainage course, we wanna keep some water going through there, because that's what's keeping that ravine alive right now, so. So we we've done that and and they're quite happy with that. There's a few different, we do have to protect the the neighborhood, I mean, we're returning what today is is a field into uh mostly parking lots, so. So the the intention obviously is that we have to take all the water that, you know, a lot soaks in 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 topsoil and Natural vegetation, so all the runoff that comes off now has to be stored somewhere, so we put that within our stormwater facility. This one actually has, and then we've got a freeboard as well, so we store everything up to a hundred year flood, so essentially the biggest in a hundred years. And yeah, and we've taken about a one meter freeboard above that as well, it might be point nine, I can't It almost doubles the capacity, so we've taken, essentially, we can, and within that facility, we can store a hundred year storm plus Another hundred percent of that volume, and if we get something even bigger than that, uh we always make sure that the that the Over, we call them the overland flow pass, so when that pond does overflow, cause it will at some point, uh and when it does, it's not going into a house. So it's gonna go down a street and this one happens to go down the The arterials to one hundred and thirty second Ave and west of Bear Creek, so. Yeah, that's that's definitely one of the focuses when we do storm uh storm ponds, that's the first thing we look at is is making sure that we're not
Thank you, I have one more question if I may, Mayor Bill. Uh and uh so thank you for uh for uh showing your foresight and planning on that one, I I just uh kinda wanna crystal ball answer, um when we're talking transportation. Um we're talking transit, we're talking high traffic density, um are you thinking like around one hundred and second street, potentially one oh third, one thirty nine? Maybe one forty, are we doubling up the size of that road, are we like two lanes in a transit lane, are we just two lanes, like one of them being a turnoff lane, like into the commercial centers? Or are we just talking single lane, like opposing traffic, traffic coming this way, traffic going that way?
Uh most of this development will be, you know, obviously with the size of the parcels, there's gonna be a quite a lot of internal road networks, so uh Team is kinda what you would see, like future shop, best buy, some roads that aren't necessarily on the city's maps, so. There'll be a lot of that, but the main the main roads will have, uh they'll be constructed to the city's commercial and industrial standards, so. Most of them, they they're all single lane, but they accommodate parking, which gives them room to have turnbys and whatnot at at different intersections. That's something that we we do get into a little bit more in detail design, so if there's a if there's a particular intersection that's that needs a dedicated left turn bay, then we With this one, it's nice that it's a a big development, it's probably gonna all go Relatively quickly and move forward together, so uh I would expect additional lanes on this road, you know, moving up to one hundredth Street. But that's all part of our our detailed design. We get the TIA completed, we know the traffic volumes, we know how many lanes
Thank you.
Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Just gonna say, it was good to ask that one to one hundred storm, uh there's some areas in the city where it's built for a one to one hundred year storm, and we've had uh Last four or five years, how the weather's changed and it's filled in flood basements, so I'd see you're really planning ahead. Is it two different developers between this Trader Ridge and uh Arbor Hills, they're two different developers, am I exactly right? Okay, I still don't think the planning, I've seen it in front of me, should've come tonight for around that, for what areas and business could do, cause this is gonna be a very good area. And I think it was very lacking, I like the park uh connectivity, you're gonna have trails and bring it to another developer's area, that's nice, but what about within this development? And I find it very lacking, like that you never brought nothing detailed in that.
So Council McLean, is there a question in there?
Well, the question is, where is it, there's nothing here right now in front of us, where is it that's lacking?
I I'm gonna uh I'm gonna say that that's not actually a question
That's good.
To answer and I save that for debate for later on. Any other questions for the delegation? See anybody else ringing in, so, Mr. Rossler, thanks very much for presenting tonight.
Did you want me to provide the wording to
Administration? If you could uh provide it to Legislative Services Manager? And then we've got that, so uh if council chooses to consider that, we could say as amended, and administration has the text of that amendment. So this is still the uh presentation submission portion of the public hearing, is there anybody else that'd like to come forward uh to speak in support of the application? Anybody else would like to come forward to speak in support of the application, gentlemen, you're all on the same team there, is that what I got earlier from the introductions, okay? Then uh is there anybody that'd like to come forward and to speak in opposition? I'll ask again if there's anybody that'd like to speak in opposition to the proposed changes. And I don't see anybody else in our gallery, uh so I'll ask one final time for council if there are any questions of administration before I close the public hearing. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Givens, a question for administration, does the amendment work as far as you're concerned?
Mr. Welton?
To the mayor, we don't have any uh concerns about the proposed amendment.
Thank you. So I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions for administration, so I'll close the public hearing, uh we move on to business arising, and Councilor Rice?
Move second reading of bylaw C twelve twelve C and amendment to the Arbor Hills area structure plan.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice, just to clarify, what did we hear before, that the amendment was for the outline?
Outline plan.
Thanks, Councilor Rice, so discussion debate on second reading of the area structure plan amendment, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries, Councilor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C twelve twelve C and amendment to the Arbor Hills area structure plan.
Councilor Rice, any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, Councilor Rice, did you wanna continue on?
Sure, I'll move second reading of bylaw C one three oh seven as amended, being a bylaw to adopt the Trader Ridge outline plan.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice, so that's the uh uh text amendment that was proposed to allow for the TIA and the placement of that Connection to one hundred and fortieth Avenue uh anywhere between one hundred and third street and one hundred and first street. Correctly, okay, uh any discussion or debate on that motion for second reading as amended? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Motion carries, Councilor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C one three oh seven as amended, being a bylaw to adopt the Trader Ridge outline plan.
Thank you, Councilor Rice, any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none? Call for the vote. That motion carries, Councilor Rice?
I move second reading of bylaw C twelve sixty dash sixteen, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice, any discussion or debate on this land use bylaw amendment? Seeing none, I will call for the vote.
And I move third reading for of bylaw C one two six zero dash sixteen, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice, any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, I believe that handles all of our business for that public hearing. And uh we move on in our agenda, we had no items of unfinished business. Uh we did have two reports though this evening, and the first is a strategic priorities port strategic priorities chart from October to December twenty fourteen, and we'll look to our city manager for an introduction.
Uh thank you, Mayor Givens. The strategic priorities chart from city council deals with a number of areas, uh look at council priorities, advocacy priorities, and corporate strategies. Um every, I guess it would be four times a year, city council reviews their strategic priorities chart, and uh Upon review, they bring forth uh an updated uh chart with uh new milestones and new targets That have been and any other changes that they may wish to do with the strategic priorities chart. The uh in this particular version, there's been a couple of additions, the Recreation Master Plan and the R S and P Strategic Plan. And I guess I suppose the other big change to the strategic priorities chart is who the lead staff person is on a number of the issues. Our Jane is sticking out her tongue, the uh Community Growth Director, who is uh in charge of a lot of the items, is uh Has announced her retirement, and so the acting director will be Jane Cadda Sharp, and so we will have a new name there and for leading those projects.
Thanks very much for that introduction, Mr. City Manager, of course, council members saw this as we revised the chart, uh but we look for a motion to adopt it and make it formal. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Givens, I move that council approved the strategic priorities chart for the term October to December two thousand and fourteen. And welcome, Jane, we're young in the list many times.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn, any discussion or debate on the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Bill, um I just have a question uh for administration. We went over this plan, uh we've got mile our milestones and stuff that we've set up, so it's a great document, my only question is uh I'm looking at the document that we had uh last week, and it had us targeted for surface and subsurface evaluation for downtown enhancement plan, uh to come back sometime this next week. But I don't see that in here, and actually, the targets changed, and I made a lot of changes to the page, but it says that December and project design scope. So I'm just wondering, um just because it's important, uh it's important for our budget if we're that we get uh That subsurface and surface evaluation, so we know where we're gonna direct our funds, uh are we still gonna be able to get that back in time for our budget deliberations?
So Councilor Ethan, which uh sorry, are you looking under corporate strategies or downtown enhancement plan?
Oh, I'm looking at corporate strategies, I'm looking at uh
Priorities up top.
Yeah, I'm looking at this sheet from our last workshop, and then I'm looking at the one here, and it's, we got target December and project design scope. But on the downtown enhancement plan, it says surface and subsurface evaluation, target September. Just kinda wondering, cause I know we reviewed where we were going with that, and I know that there's a lot of discussion about when are we gonna get That subsurface and surface evaluation, and I'm just wondering why it's not on here now, and we should have that, I think, if we're going to redesign our downtown.
No, I I think uh Councilor Ethan, I think uh if I remember correctly, administration what administration has those numbers, what council was looking for was some sort of cost estimate Before going into budget, to understand exactly the scope of Cost implications of what we have underground might be, um and I believe that was discussed at the uh workshop that we held in Muscat Park. So uh, Mr. City Manager?
Christine D'Dolly, the Engineering Services Christine D'Dolly, the Engineering Services Manager, will be presenting some of those items at the capital budget.
Okay.
The downtown enhancement, so that will be at budget time.
Okay. Yeah, just, sorry, thanks just for my own clarification.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. Any other discussion or debate on the strategic priorities chart? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, we had another report, and I think we'll look for an introduction from administration. Mr. Welton? 8.2, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C-1260-19, Add Government Service to the CA District. Mr. Welton?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has received an application to amend the land use bylaw to add government services and permitted use to the CA District. The Municipal Government Act requires that we hold a public hearing prior to giving second reading, uh, and advertising of that, uh, will be, uh, undertaken according to the requirement of the act. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Any, um, sorry, so I look for a motion for first reading? Councilor Rice?
I move second reading of, uh, first reading, I'm sorry, first reading of bylaw C-1260-19, amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So motion for first reading is not open for discussion or debate, I'll call for the vote.
I would move that Monday, November 3rd, 2014, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location for that public hearing? No problem. I will, uh, call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. I think that handles all of our reports items, and would take us into committee business. We'd start with 9.1, the Arts Development Committee. And Council Thieson, did you handle that meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Uh, just, uh, I, I'd like to move that, uh, council approved the minutes, uh, for the Arts Development Committee meeting, held Friday, September 19th, 2014, uh, with an amendment, though. I just noticed going over our notes here that, uh, the minutes were there, one of the festival, uh, I guess, uh, people who had applied for grant funding. It says here that, uh, they applied in the amount of $2,000. They actually applied in the amount of $5,000. So the numbers look skewed, and they asked for two, and we gave them more than double that, so, yeah.
So, good catch. That's why we read the minutes, and we'll make sure that we get them, that amendment made. So a motion to approve the amendment, the minutes as amended? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Uh, Council Thieson, did you want to speak to the minutes at all?
Sure. There's just a couple of things that we touched on. We did have some funding to, to give out to different community groups over the, uh, over the rest of the year. We had about $5,000 left, and we had, uh, two applicants come forward. Uh, one was the GP Singers Festival of Carols, and they asked for a nominal, uh, donation of $450, so which we easily accepted. And then the other one was the Grand Prairie District Music Festival Association, uh, and they're having their music festival here in, next spring, April 13th to May 3rd. Typically, they're a very, uh, self-sustainable group, but, uh, after 10 to 15 years of doing it on their own, they needed to catch up on some stuff, so they applied. And we said, no problem, because we like what you're doing. So we spent all our money, we're currently bankrupt till the next budget. And, uh, then the other thing was, is that, uh, we just, uh, were keeping the rest of our committee members, uh, aware of, uh, where our festival funding was going as far as being pushed forward to budget cycle, and that there would be new opportunity in the next round of granting.
You go away once, Rory, and they blow your whole money.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. Uh, we move on to 9.2, the Council Committee of the Whole. Councilor McLean?
Mayor Given, I move council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held September 19th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Did everyone have a chance to read that set of minutes? Any discussion? Councilor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, just a comment, this is actually just a, uh, where we reviewed the RCMP Strategic Plan, and actually, we took that to, uh, to council last time and approved the plan, but this is, you know, I'll catch up with the minutes.
Any further discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. And it would take us to 9.3, the Community Growth Committee from September 23rd. Councilor O'Toole, was that your committee?
Yes, it is, Mayor Given, and if I could, uh, I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee, held on, uh, September 23rd, 2014.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Counselor O'Toole?
I got one item, sir. Uh, I move the council support an application to the Alberta Community Partnership Grant for the Wapiti River Management Plan, and the NDA Greenview Act is the managing partner of the grant funding, should the application be successful. And in speaking to this, uh, the Wapiti River Management Plan Steering Committee has determined the scope of the plan and is seeking funding for the socio-economic and landscape commutative effects assessment components, boy, there's a lot of words there, at a cost of approximately $1 million. Uh, correspondence has been received requesting the city participate in the regional collaboration grant to fund the socio-economic and community consultation component of the Wapiti River Management Plan.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Uh, no, I don't, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on to 9.4, Community Living, and Counselor, Terrence?
Mayor Given, I just had, uh, one question, uh, for the minutes there. I see that the, um, Community Garden and Edible Landscaping Policy was passed, and, uh, just wondering why it hasn't, wasn't coming to council tonight, or do we expect that in the future? Where, where is the, what's the status of that?
Uh, we'll look to our Legislative Services Manager, Ms. Williams?
Um, Mayor Bill, that, uh, will be coming to the next council meeting. There was a, a few adjustments we wanted to make to it before it came. It was just, um, administrat, administrative things, you know, grammar, whatever, so, yeah.
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks very much. Counselor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that, uh, council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held September 23rd, 2014.
Thanks very much, Council Adburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything out of place that we'd like to correct before we adopt them? Seeing nothing? I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Adburn, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, uh, three things, actually. Uh, Mayor Given, thanks a lot. Uh, we did receive delegation from Grand Prairie Live Theater, uh, their ask, uh, at the end of the presentation. They shared a, uh, public meeting that had been held with the, the ask was a, that a commission, that, uh, council commissioned a feasibility study regarding a regional performing arts multimedia center. Uh, we've asked them in to bring a report back with estimated costs. Uh, actually, that, uh, report is coming to committee tomorrow. Jubilee Park Enhancement Plan, we referred to, uh, to budget deliberations, a three-year phase-in of an, of an enhancement plan for, uh, Jubilee Park, as you'll note in the, in the, in the motion. And finally, uh, uh, Counselor Clayton brought forward a discussion regarding, uh, uh, short-term and long-term, uh, plans for the Bear Creek Pool, and so we've asked them in to report back. The, uh, motion reads, direct administration bring back a report in January 2015 outlining a process of exploring alternate uses of the Bear Creek facility and the potential for future and interim uses. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Adburn. I see you may have a question here. Counselor Rice?
Jubilee Park, I think the lighting in there originally was fueled by natural gas, uh, which means there wouldn't be any underground electrical, but I think we, we know that in order for a park to be successful, it needs adequate lighting, and I, I wonder if your estimates include putting underground wiring in so we can, there was an experiment that didn't appear to work, in my opinion, and I could be proven wrong.
Turn your own microphone on there, Counselor Adburn.
Gary may help with this, actually, but it may be somewhat counterintuitive, but, uh, I think parks are saying that, uh, there's some money for lighting, and, uh, really, uh, too much lighting, uh, brings too much other stuff to a park. So this was a, a balance of, uh, some, some improved lighting, but not bringing it to, to a point where, uh, lots of other things happen.
Counselor Rice? If I could get the answer you look for. There, there certainly was a consideration of lighting as one of the more significant costs, if I remember correctly, in the plan. Other questions? Sir Collins? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Kind of going on the back of Counsel Rice's question, uh, I don't believe maybe anything has to be underground. It could be solar. We are there in technology, and, uh, maybe we can get after it and start doing it. And I think administration is looking at solar. It's been brought up quite a bit by a few councillors the last few years. Thank you.
Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, if I recall from that discussion, uh, some of that light was decorative lighting, and, uh, that's why the price was quite a bit less. It wasn't, uh, safety lighting, so...
Okay. Thanks for that clarification, Counsel Clayton. We'll move on to 9.5, uh, the Community Safety Committee from September 30th. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee meeting held September 30th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing? I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean? Motion rising?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council award tender T-58-564-14, bulk highway salt to NSC Minerals Limited in the amount of $314,748, excluding GST, as the lowest bidder meeting city specification, which I think it might have been the only bidder.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Everyone wants safe streets, so buy some salt.
Deer like it, dude.
Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, anything else you want to highlight?
Just, just a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor Given. There was one, uh, Robert Carroll had, Transportation came by and was brought a pamphlet for council to look at at the committee meeting. Some adjustments made, some good, uh, advice from council. One was, you know, advertise on the map layout that most likely every two weeks, the day before, collection of Aqua Terra for landfill garbage would be maybe possibly, you'll be in there cleaning the, the streets in the residential area. So there was some very good comments made on that, so, because a lot of people say, we'll believe it when we see it, and I think they are gonna see it this year. It's gonna be a very good, uh, new policy. So that was important, since we are right around the corner of some below zero weathers coming up. And another one that was brought up was about EMS, um, fire department going when ambulances weren't ready and what was happening. I think a report's still coming back to council in six to eight weeks, but a lot of us know that there was a peak ambulance that was taken out of stream, and it sounds like it's back in stream, and, but they're still gonna bring a report to us to tell us how, uh, you know, within the city boundaries and, and surrounding areas, how affected individuals, uh, for response times. And so, excuse me, I look forward to that report in six to eight weeks. Thank you.
Counselor McLean's very passionate about ambulances. Choked up a little bit there towards the end. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Uh, we'll move to 9.6, the Corporate Services Committee meeting. Counselor Logan?
I'd like, I'd like to move that, uh, council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee in September.
Thanks very much. Counselor Logan, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Counselor Adburn, did you notice something?
I just noticed that, uh, the report included, uh, the cost estimates, and I didn't see anything in the minutes. I believe it was 2.5 million each year for two years. Yeah, on the service center, uh, referral to budget.
So, uh, Mr. Anderson, you said it was 5 million total, is what the report was?
Yes, that's the estimated cost, $5 million over two years.
So that number will be at budget. If there's no other discussion on the minutes, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan, did you want to highlight anything from that, or some minutes?
That Lauren just, uh, mentioned on, that we've spent a fair amount of time going over the, uh, proposed, uh, renovations to the service center and a number of other adjustments that are gonna be required to, uh, that whole establishment in terms of the need to satisfy, uh, the growth that we've had in the community. So there's no action that comes forward from that particular meeting, but you'll see it on future agendas.
Thanks, Counsel Logan. I think that handles all of our committee business. Uh, we had no items of correspondence, we had no delegations this morning, this afternoon, uh, and no notices of motion, so that takes us right to council member reports from our agencies, boards, and commissions, and we'll start with, uh, Nighthawk. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just, uh, quick update, uh, this past Saturday, the Nighthawk Recreation, um, place, facility, rather, had a, their 18th Annual Comedy Night. It was held at, uh, Five Mile Hall. They had a packed house, and, uh, although I don't have any numbers to report, uh, from all, uh, that I can see, it was a huge success, and I'll, uh, report next time in regards to how much they raised, so, thank you. It was a, uh, it was a great success.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. And, uh, Counselor O'Toole, staying on the same side of the room, you had a report on Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum?
Yes, Mayor Given. Uh, we had a meeting here last week. Uh, we had actually two meetings, and one was a building committee meeting, and I'm pretty happy to say that, uh, our last official meeting will be the 30th of this month. Uh, with that, the building will be pretty much, uh, enclosed, there'll be some light, uh, uh, how would you maybe put it? Operational things that need to be in place, and by about the 15th of November, uh, our staff, uh, paleontologists will be moving in, and that sort of thing, so, looking good there. And as for the, uh, operating of the society, we had a meeting just to meet all the new, uh, people that were on the new board, and, uh, had a few things to discuss regarding, uh, guidelines and stuff like that, but, uh, we're in good shape, ready to go.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So we'll start with, uh, council member roundtable, and we'll start with Counsel McLean first, and go to my, uh, counterclock, or sorry, clockwise.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, September 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, I was in and attended AUMA Conference, and just once again, Counsel Rice, thank you President AUMA for, uh, doing such a fabulous job, and she really did, uh, if, you know, as I've been there a few times now with, I think, the three different presidents since I've only been, uh, council second term, uh, I'm glad that Counsel Rice is president there, and there's a lot of momentum happening, and how it might happen down the road. There's been some resolutions passed, and one was done with Coal Lake and lower regionalization, and looking at different things, and I'm very proud to say I was at this AUMA and with, uh, fellow councillors and the mayor given. Uh, September 28th, I was also, me and my family, as Tiny Hands of Hope in Muscley Park. It's more than doubled in size, um, for this event, and this is the second year, so we all have relatives or family or friends that, uh, youth could go to soon, and so this event is very big, since we're the youngest city in Canada. Chances are, something like this, a lot of people are affected. So they did a tremendous job, and hats off to this event in many more years. And then also, September 30th, we had a, you can say, a dinner date with the Downtown Association, um, about media concerns, sidewalk, which seems to be every year, about the blocks, and some are uneven, some are perfect, and, uh, about the future. As you know, our downtown, uh, development plan down the road is coming to the budget, and underground services, and some of them that I found, uh, was clay, clay pipes from seven years ago. So if there's one area, Grand Prairie's pretty new, but our downtown, some of it isn't. That's everything. Thank you.
Counselor McLean? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, uh, the, uh, Counselor McLean, uh, covered off, uh, the one item I was going to speak to, and, uh, with, uh, AUMA and the fact that I didn't attend AUMA, I had a really late couple of weeks, the latest since the last election. There's only one item that I want to, uh, mention, was, uh, uh, this last Sunday, October 6th, uh, I had the pleasure of, uh, attending the Golden Age Center, where the, uh, Regional Archives Society, uh, puts on, uh, a tea for, uh, anybody that wants to come, but, uh, but most are, uh, people that, uh, access the, uh, uh, Golden Age Center, and had the pleasure of, uh, speaking... Age Center, and had the pleasure of speaking to them for a few minutes about my experiences in Africa. Now, nobody hissed at me, so I think it went okay. Thank you.
Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I too went to the AUMA, I guess, conference here in Edmonton recently, but before that, I'll get to that. We, well, I guess it's kind of after, really, it's all after, so let's just start with this, we can work way backwards. Today, I took a tour with councillors O'Toole and Radburn down at the New Parts Facility, and they showed us a grand facility. It's got a ton of potential, a lot of space, and they seem to got a really good plan to back it up as well, so that they can stay sustainable, so it's really nice to get that tour. This past Saturday, I was with, again, councillors Radburn and O'Toole, and Mr. Mayor himself at the Sisters in Spirit Walk and Ceremony down at Grand Prairie Regional College. On Tuesday, the thirtieth, when I returned to Grand Prairie, I rushed over to an information sharing dinner with the Downtown Association, where we shared a lot of really good ideas, concerns, finding solutions together as a group. It was really productive, and I was thankful that we could be there for that, especially myself. Now, the AUMA. What a great event, I have to, I have to say, like, you know, the number of networking opportunities, the conversations that we had, the sessions were great, even the medias, temporary foreign workers, my dad called me up right after he saw the sleeve of one of my red suits, and he said, "I saw Helen Rice on TV," and he was in Winnipeg. So obviously, like, through the AUMA Conference and global television, Helen Rice's face was plastered all across Western Canada, supporting all mid-sized and large cities in the province especially for a temporary foreign worker program, and what is happening with that. So she was a strong advocate that way. We also had meetings with the ministers, we went to sessions on regionalization, and I had great conversations. One in particular, I'm probably going to talk about it in the future, a really good conversation that I had with the entire council of the town of Devon, who is currently in the process of retrofitting an old oil refinery grounds into a solar power plant to power their entire township on nothing but solar energy. So I want to keep those discussions open, I want to keep it open here, and I'd like to bring that forward in future, but, yeah, it was probably the best conversation that I had with anybody out there, was with the whole council, and, yeah, that was about it. So, oh, I have to say, before I go, the entire conference, I said, was great, but there was no more memorable moments than each and every single time this fair lady, Helen Rice, stood up to the mic. Not only was she congratulating people for spending money, for supporting, like, women in politics, but she was also knocking down the old premier's competition by, you know, heckling them right from the stage, and I think she pulled probably about fifty or sixty laughs throughout the three days out of the crowd, so, probably, I thought I was a good emcee. This, this queen takes the cake, so I'll pass it on to her now.
Councillor Rice?
Minister Diana McQueen and Brad Pickering, the new deputy minister, that they have put the amendment of the Municipal Government Act up to a number one priority of the Department of Municipal Affairs, so that was, that was fabulous. Also attended a meeting of the Alberta Recycling Management Authority. There are four hundred and seventy municipal collection sites, and last year, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand TVs and computers were recycled, two point three million liters of paint, four hundred and twenty-one thousand spray cans, and seven million tires. Since the program's inception in nineteen ninety-two, eighty-six million tires have been recycled. That's, that's important to a municipal council, because for every month, you can extend the life of your landfill. You can imagine what a, what a nightmare it's going to be to build a new landfill. First of all, the cost, but secondly, the sighting of it, because it's not in my backyard, so diversion from the landfill is vitally important, and so when we're seeing numbers like this, it's really important to us.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Once again, I attended the AUMA. Couple of the highlights over the four days that I was there was a sit-down with council with K Division, and there was a number of topics that were discussed, and their direction, and what we would like to see direction, and sometimes we met, and sometimes there was not so much meeting. Also, I had the ability to sit down with Minister Clemchuck and listen to her talk regarding FCSS funding, and it's a, it's a province-wide concern, and there was numerous people asking her similar questions about programs that had been cut, and she said that she was looking into it, and it is high on her priority as well. Later on in the week, I ended up going to the Community Foundation on behalf of the Edmonton International Airport, a very, very successful event out at the Entrec Center. Once again, joined a number of colleagues here, Downtown Association joint meeting, and a number of people that I met from the Downtown Association thought it was a great meeting, got a lot of stuff discussed, and possible answers in the future. Also, on the Friday, twinning of Project of Highway Forty-three, the announcement with our Minister of Transportation, and some of the gentlemen that were involved in the project itself. It was announced at Center Two Thousand last Friday. On Sunday, I attended the, actually, Saturday, Grand Prairie Friendship Center Sisters in Walk Spirit and Candlelight Vigil. It was a very, very somber event, where there was a number of people that showed appreciation and concern that women, native women, had been murdered in the past, and they would like the federal government to sort of intervene a little bit and find out some funding to maybe stop this. And once again, as Mr. Thiessen said, we toured the New Parts Facility. It's twice the size, maybe three times the size of the four times the size of their current facility, and there's lots of potential, fifty-some acres of property there. So with that, that was my report.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just quickly, I also attended the official announcement of the opening of, twinning of Forty-three, and one note from that day that I thought was quite special was the fact that there's over eleven hundred kilometers of twinned highway now from Grand Prairie to Montana, which is probably one of the largest in, in Canada for a twinned highway as well. The Downtown Association, and I also attended the Community Foundation Gala, which a few other council members attended, and it was once again a great event put on by a great organization within our community, so thank you. Oh, I also attended AMA, and Helen was incredible, so, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. Councillor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I as well attended AUMA, and hats off to President Rice, great event. One of the highlights for me was speaking with our Infrastructure Minister, Manmeet Bular. It seemed to be there was a lot of interest in the way that schools are funded, and there was a significant number of communities that had issues with how schools are being rolled out, and, and the different processes they use for that. So it's, I'm, you know, to see we're not the only ones with that issue, and, you know, hopefully those, those concerns went forward, and we'll see some, some action taken on that. I as well attended the Downtown Association meeting, great, great to meet with stakeholders there. And this past weekend, I was able to attend the Suicide Prevention Resource Center Chair Extraordinaire, and it was another great event, lots of money raised, and it's great to see the community support there.
Thanks very much, Councillor Terrence. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So we'll start with AUMA. Really enjoy, I really do enjoy the resolutions, part of the, of the conference. I think that's when we can voice our concerns and, and provide our feedback to the provincial government. And just a note, since Helen keeps teaching us things, but did you know that AUMA represents eighty-six percent of Alberta's population? Twenty-ninth, I had a meeting with City Manager Serbach, thirtieth, Downtown Association Council Dinner, and the DTA Board meeting the next day. So, yeah, some of you mentioned, but sidewalks, streetlights, infrastructure assessment, South Montrose Site, York, Germaine Park, Relaxation Park, so a number of very useful topics to be discussed. And I would share with council, my colleagues in council, from the Downtown Association Board meeting the next morning, they are very, very appreciative of the time and the communication we have with them, so I think that we're both respectful of each other and work together very well. Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee meeting, Sisters in Spirit Walk, and the tour of the New Parts Facility. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. So along with the other members of council, I also attended the AUMA Conference in Edmonton. On returning, I attended the Community Foundation Gala that was mentioned by Councillor Clayton and Councillor O'Toole. Just of note there, Councillor O'Toole was sitting with as a guest of Edmonton Airports, but the Senior Vice President of Regional Services for Air Canada, had a good opportunity to speak with him, and he's interested in coming to the community to speak with the community about our priorities for air service, and also to share with the community a little bit about how Air Canada does their business. That was a great connection in an unexpected forum, so that was, that was really useful. The next day, I was on hand at the Tiny Hands of Hope event, where Councillor McLean noted the fantastic growth in that, and I just really want to highlight the courage that the organizers had to take something that is very difficult personally, but to find strength in that, to share that with the community, and give it opportunity for others to find strength in that. This is, for those that don't know, Tiny Hands of Hope is an organization that provides supports to parents who are experiencing, who have experienced infant loss, of children up to, I believe, two years of age, and so they're working to provide, ensure that there are resources available in the community, and that, in the community and at the hospital. So they've done a great job in growing this organization the last couple of years, and I think that it's taken a lot of courage to do that. I, on the second, I attended at lunchtime, a open house for Alcoholics Anonymous. This was a public open house to inform the community about Alcoholics Anonymous and what's available in the community. Was really, an interesting point was made, that Alcoholics Anonymous is intended to be anonymous, of course, but not invisible. They certainly want to maintain their visibility so that people who need help know where to go. I'll just share briefly the fact that there are fourteen meetings every week in the Grand Prairie area, so there are more than two meetings, there are two meetings a day. Some of those meetings are, are open, public meetings, that anyone can attend, and others are closed meetings, so there's about an open meeting just about every day and a closed meeting just about every day, which was something that I was surprised to learn. If anybody's looking to learn more, they can go to the local Alcoholics Anonymous website, and that's grandprairieaa.com, so a very simple website if they want to find out details and meeting locations. I also attended the announcement of the twinning of Highway Forty-three. Congratulations to the provincial government for that. Now we just have to continue on to the BC border. On the fourth, I was also in attendance at the Sisters in Spirit Vigil Walk, and on the fifth, I was back down at Muscat CP Park to do a proclamation of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the CIBC Run for the Cure. If I remember correctly, the run this year raised over a hundred thousand dollars, which is a great milestone for the community, in just the second year of having an official CIBC Run for the Cure event. We've had a breast cancer run for a number of years, but this is just the second year now where we've had an official CIBC Run for the Cure, so congratulations to the organizers of that. And with that, that's all I have to report, and I think our meeting is adjourned.